Right, good afternoon, good morning wherever you're watching this from. I'm Chris Brooks from LSP Forum Productions and today I'm here with David Rogers, an ex-city councillor for the Green Party. David, welcome.
Thank you very much, it's a pleasure to be able to speak on your channel and address your audience.
Lovely to have you.
Good morning. There are several areas all to cover, but I want to start off particularly with, as you might guess from this, fifteen-minute cities, twenty-minute neighbourhoods, and the potential dangers of those. Because I think that, well, maybe, great idea. Wouldn't it be lovely if we all had, we lived in a place where all facilities were within walking distance, ten minutes?
A bit like a town centre.
Be just like a town centre, just what I was going to say. So, we already have that rounded. So, in East Anglia, which is in the east of England, and it's the lumpy bit above London, there's a river which runs between, across the lumpy bit, it's called the River Waveney. And along the River Waveney, there are several small market towns, not dissimilar from Thetford, but generally a bit smaller. They're about seven miles apart, because, there are four of them, there's Des, Halston, Bungie and Beckles. All about seven miles apart, and the reason is because it's maximum three and a half miles to get to the town. That's a reasonable distance to drive livestock every morning, taken back when the show's over. And so, they developed over centuries as these twenty-minute neighbourhoods. It's a natural thing, it's a natural state of business in this country and I'm sure many others around the world. What concerns me is the way this idealistic way of living is being developed in a discriminatory manner. So already we start to see vehicles being prevented from using certain areas. This is happening now, so it's happening in London, ULEZ being expanded to Greater London. That's a very big area. London is a big city in terms of the area it covers. It's not very high-rise and it has a lot of parks. And it's towns and villages which have grown together and melded as one, so it becomes a big area. At the moment, in effect, you can't get into London in a vehicle which is, diesel vehicle which is old in about 2016. I happen to own one of those, so I've got a dog in the fight so to speak. Now, in this particular case, I think, well, what's the gain here? All right, the saving of the planet, it's using less diesel, not a bad thing, but it's pretty marginal. And the dangers are, it's discriminatory. Who are people who drive diesel vans old in about 2016? Well, it's going to be generally tradesmen, women obviously, it's going to be working people. Working people are being charged money for moving around and doing their job. It's absolutely brazen, and the gain is nowhere near enough to make it worthwhile. And this is getting worse. Couple of weeks ago, we had a show on the BBC, Panorama Show. BBC describes Panorama as its flagship current affairs programme. Been running since the early 50s, so it's very well established. And they had half an hour on the developments in Oxfordshire, a place in the middle of England. And as part of this show, they interviewed somebody called councillor Gant. Now, he is top banana highways, so he's the cabinet member for highways, Oxford County Council. Now, he's elected, so this is a curious thing, it's all very upfront. And so is the council elected, of course, these people have chosen to make decisions. Now, he was saying that already there are restrictions in Oxford as well as in many other places, depending on the kind of vehicle that's being used. So, for example, you can go down this road or that road, it's a taxi and a bus and so on, all sounds very reasonable. But, it's encroaching all the time. There are not only mechanical blockages, so bollards that rise out of the ground, Ford will love that. So, coming up on a timer, so you can only go places at a particular time, physically you can only go. Also, you have, not only when you're allowed to go to places, there's also where you're allowed to go. There's discrimination developing on where you live, not just which vehicle you're driving. So, and this is what he's saying, he's saying, I'll quote him, "Traffic filters are planned." He's referring to traffic filters based on, unbelievably, well, it's true, where you live. So, he was saying, these traffic filters which are planned will depend on where you live. So if you live in the centre of Oxford, you're allowed to use the three, six main roads in Oxford for 100 days a year. If you live in the outskirts, 25 days a year. If you don't live in Oxford at all, you can only use these main roads in Oxford at night. And there we are, in plain view. So, if you're lucky enough to live in the centre of Oxford, which I'm sure is very agreeable, I could admit I've never been there. That's nice, you can move around for next to free. If you live in the outskirts, not quite so free. If you're outside Oxford, not at all unless you want to do this at night. Already we're starting to see discrimination, not only against, generally speaking, working people in vans, but against people who live in places which are less desirable than they might otherwise be. And of course, these things called fines can also be seen as feats. In other words, if you're richer, if you can do it, no problem.
Absolutely, yeah.
So, this is clearly discriminatory against the poor. Now, this sure is a thin end of a wedge. I mean, we've already got facial recognition, it's well established. It's only allowed in this country and private property as far as I understand it. So if there aren't, there isn't any facial recognition in the streets, that could easily change. I can just see a scenario in, take for example, an agreeable seaside town in the east of England with one road in and one road out, you might be able to imagine one, because there is one.
Hounstanton?
Well, I wouldn't particularly think it should happen.
Okay.
But, anyway, so there you are, east of England, Suffolk coast, one road in, one road out, it's a very nice town. Now, if they wanted to, they could have a camera saying, "Right, we won't have any of these vehicles, of course, because they're polluting, so there's your ghetto." You know, "We don't want these vehicles because they pollute the planet," and all the rest of it. But it's discriminatory as I've just described. But that could go further, because one of the things we've got in this country is not only discrimination on grounds of wealth, this happens a lot around the world, we've also got snobbery, which is going to play out really interestingly as this goes on, goes on. So I can always, I'm waxing a bit, I call it lyrical, but it's a kind of dystopia really, where we have cameras up recognising people. Now, in this agreeable seaside town in the east of England, and where, well, it's populated by a lot of snobs frankly, they want to keep people out, very easily done. Now, of course, you couldn't do it by race because that'd be illegal, let alone this being entirely unreasonable and unfair and not right. You could do it by relative wealth, you could do it by poor taste. So, you know, don't want to cut this chap's jib, you know? Well, that's a bit difficult to, you know, hack yourself. Well, you could, instead of facial recognition, you could have, for example, clothing recognition. Okay, we'll have a Primark filter, anybody wearing Primark, ding ding ding, alarm goes off, and you've got your private security escorting people from the town. This sounds a bit silly, but the problem is, as we go along, people are getting more and more used to it all the time, like the discrimination we've got already. So I think it's really, really dangerous. Now, this effort to create these harmonious lovely towns and cities is so negative. That's why I feel like it's really quite strange, you know? Physically preventing people moving around, forcing people to pay extra to move around, and it could be done in a far more egalitarian manner. It can be done through the planning system that already exists and the rate system which already exists. The supermarkets, for example, have enormous advantages financially, obviously a sheer scale to the detriment of small shops and small businesses and so on. That could surely be easily changed by adjusting a rate system, just charging more crudely, so the plain field is made more level for small businesses in the middle of small towns. For example, Halston, which I mentioned earlier, which I know well. It's got everything there, so it's got a couple of pubs, half a pub, it only opens sometimes, cafes, doctors, school, dentists, football team, garage, you know, it's got, and all those sort of things that are necessary to keep life ticking over. And it seems to me that with that and adjustments to the planning system, the thing is, this takes effort. You know, it takes legislation, planning, planning. Changing the planning law are notoriously difficult in this country. I think it's largely primary legislation post-war. Welding and again, listed buildings, change of use, it's really difficult to change a shop to a house and a house to a shop. If that was liberalised, it would really help. There's a housing shortage in this country, but if you look at the buildings around, and Thetford's a good example, a lot of them are empty, they're not being used properly. You know, if that could just be, if these buildings could be made available for people to live in, then we'd solve a number of problems, including building a thousand new homes on a floodplain.
Plus, we also, we lack the infrastructure for like the doctors, dentists, you know, so it's good having these houses, but, you know, the schools, there's only one school in Thetford, one high school, unless you've got the money to go to Danza Road.
The gram school, yeah.
You know, so it's good having these houses, but they need the infrastructure around it.
That must be a very big school, is it?
Yeah, it's the Thetford Academy up off the Croxton Road. But it's, you know, like I say, it's not very convenient having a massive population when you've only got a handful of schools. Trying to get a doctor's appointment is insane.
Well, yeah, that's the widest structural problems there as well, aren't there? The NHS is in decline massively. And the fundamental question there is whether to, I suppose crudely, as Gilles Jean might say, well, raise taxes and pay for it, or not. I tend to distrust institutions in general, because they tend to develop a life of their own and tend to look after themselves, like, it's almost like Hal on 2001, you know? You forget, like a lip read, Dave, you know, it's kind of frightening, isn't it? Right, yeah, an observation I wanted to make was that it's interesting how climate change has a lot of emphasis in Protestant Christian countries. So, Greta Thunberg, for example, Sweden, so Scandinavia, Germany, this country, former British colonies. Lot of emphasis, much less emphasis in South America, Africa, India, China and Russia. And I think, let's not say that this is wrong, but interesting that we should, that there should be this clear emphasis, it seems to me. And it's surely because of the Protestant Christian emphasis on the Bible and the singular relationship with God, you know? Protestants will develop their own relationship with God using the Bible to develop arguments and their conscience and all the rest of it. Which does mean that Protestants tend to take the problems of the world on their shoulders. This in a way has just had its benefits with the Enlightenment and industry and capitalism and liberalism, arguably. But Protestant can't go to a priest and confess or, and all the other outlets that people have in other religions around the world, and religion is highly influential, I think, over culture and thousands of years. So I wonder whether we ought to look at that. I've got a book at home, it's a book on Reader's Digest, Atlas, it's quite a big thing. And it has a foreword, it's 61 or 63 it's published, and a foreword which talks about the forthcoming Christ Age. And this is only, what is that, 50, 60 years ago? So already there has been a change of mind. Now, sure, we have more facts, you know, more statistics than we had then, but it does make you wonder, you know, whether this, whether these ideas are as stable as we're led to believe. And...
We have had about 60 years' worth of false or incorrect predictions with regards to climate.
Which ones are those, which false predictions?
Give me the internet. By 20 whatever the case will be under, you know, all these deemed day predictions with regards to the climate change and ever... None of them have come to fruition.
You need to be careful with your sources though, don't you, with the internet? I mean, it would be good to have some Met Office predictions and some from serious academic institutions which have failed to contribute.
The articles are actually in something like the New York Times.
Even then, it's journalism, you know, I think it's important to look at, look as close to raw data as we possibly can, but I haven't got it up my fingertips either, so, you know, we're coming through filters. I think it's important when trying to establish facts that we deal with what we know and extrapolate as accurately as we can. So there are lots of things I don't know, but I assume to be true. I haven't experienced myself, I've seen no empirical evidence. For example, the existence of Australia, I think it exists. I've never been there, but I know that people calling themselves Australian, speak in a similar way and they refer to the same place, Australia's very consistent, the same towns and cities get mentioned, the same animals and all the rest of it, and cricket gets relentlessly mentioned, of course. Less so these days, interesting. So, you know, there, so there you are. So if you've got a kind of knowledge around a supposed fact, it helps a great deal to try and translate what might be actually true without demonstrating it to be so. That's empiricism, which is another arguably benefit of the Protestant mindset. The notion of people from somewhere and people from nowhere.
Yes.
And dividing up humanity between the two, there's quite a lot of it going on. You mentioned politicians crashing around the world and rich people who draw less attention. Go around in large squads as well without the slightest self-consciousness. And their lack of apparent loyalty to a place, and whether that matters. But it does feed into this idea of poor people being confined by not being allowed to drive their old van to places nominated by people on the grounds that it's going to destroy the planet. So it's kind of at the other end of the scale, but it's the same phenomenon. I think it's highly dangerous. And we see more of that happening all the time. It's quite dystopia really. If it carries on like this, we'll have everybody in solitary confinement. Either little solitary confinement or financial solitary confinement.
Digital prisons.
What?
Digital prisons.
Digital prisons, yeah, exactly so. And with physical prisons, possibly digital prisons, there could be. You know, if you, if the prison bars are financed, so you can't do this, you can't do that because you can't afford it. But you can, of course, because you can afford it. You know, you have, well, you have all sorts of potential problems because money, of course, has not only a moral dimension, but it depends on its scale. So, you know, a pound to a rich person means a lot, there's a lot of phenomenon to a pound to a poor person, you know, quite obviously really. But these financial digital prisons and physical prisons, like not being able to move around, it's also an argument against disease as well as saving the planet. So by stopping people moving around, you're preventing disease. Imagine a world where everybody's in solitary confinement, it would be wonderful, wouldn't it? So, no disease, there'd be no rebelling, no argument, everybody could be fed, kept watered, and everything would be stable, be no war, of course, no pestilence. The Four Horsemen of Apocalypse will all be out of business, and everybody would be happy in their solitary confinement. Or would they? Of course they wouldn't, unless they can be persuaded that it's such a lovely, it's a gilded cage, what a lovely solitary confinement. And that's the way we're going, there's so much accuracy essence towards it.
It's a bit like that rat experiment where they give the rats cocaine to keep them happy until they'd had something natural, and then they'd leave that alone.
They'd leave the cocaine alone.
So, yeah, it was a really famous experiment.
Yeah, I didn't know about that one. But there's a comparison between 1984, George Orwell's novel, which is, if you've read it, what a horrible existence, absolutely awful. And some people retain the conscience to know it's absolutely awful. But there is also Brave New World, I was about to say, you know, just prior to the Second World War, so...
Which is the more technical?
It is more technical, but people are condescended to be happy, you know, they're bred to be happy, and so they are. Is that better or worse? Maybe, there's an argument for, well, you know, let's all get, let's all get happy, let's all take happy pills and then nothing really matters, does it? And then you're into the areas of defining, defining being a human being, really. And that's coming up on the rails really fast, technically as much as anything else. When is a human being dead? When does a human being die? When does a human being start to live? And what is the edge of a human being? And we're getting that with AI now. It's fascinating that these tech bosses want a moratorium, which is what the press is saying, right, on that AI. Six-month moratorium on developing it. Well, if they want that, that's extraordinary, are they frightened? There's something they know that we don't, or they're worried about. But it's rollicking on really fast, I mean, it's really quite, it's really quite frightening how fast that's happening. And now, in the interest of polemics, the start of being a human being, very controversial, of course. People are really, really worked up about it. But it seems to me it needs a definition, otherwise we really are in danger of letting the start of being a human being slide. It already is, abortion is legal in this country, it's tantamount to fashionable. But if we decide when human beings start, it's pretty irrational at the moment, 24 weeks after conception. That's just a convenience. And it needs to be, I think, there needs to be a political cultural decision on when life starts, and it sure isn't there. It's likely to be a lot earlier, I don't know enough about the technicalities, but when gam eats meat or the sperm meets the egg, or at some point when, all things being equal, I mean, because a lot of fertilized eggs die naturally, but that's another matter, you know, people die naturally. But we need to come to a start point and agree what it is. But the problem is, that would make abortion illegal, and of course, a lot of people don't want that. It gets very confused with feminism and the individual rights of women and all the rest of it. But I think we do need to make a clear, we need to work to a clear start. And a clear finish as well, and then you have to ask, well, do human beings have agency? We've been saying, well, we really must, you know, we really must. People, you know, shouldn't be prevented, controlled and all the rest of it. Well, in that case, suicide should be legal. Pragmatically, it can happen anyway, you can't stop somebody committing suicide easily, generally. But there are some cases where people can't commit suicide even though they want to. And so I think people should be allowed to commit suicide, and the laws around suicide need to be, well, maybe they need further work, but it can be done. The story is that people get exploited, you know, if they're about to die. Well, maybe, but they can, you know, we can put better things to it.
We usually treat dogs better.
Yes, well, and that's another one, isn't it? That animal rights and all the rest of it, you know, should dogs be property? And this is why we need to define a human being, it is a great ape. And some people will say, well, they deserve the same rights as we do, as a gorilla or a chimpanzee does. Well, this is why we need to define humanity, because it's just slipping. And so the start of being a human being, the end of being a human being, and the edges of being a human being, as people have implants, you know, you could say, well, a false tooth is an implant. So it's a sliding scope to having an enhanced body. And I noticed that there is quite a cultural opposition to enhancement of a body, so...
They even can't even define a woman.
Fuck, yeah, that's, well, that's extraordinary, I don't quite...
Lost my word there.
Yeah, it is, it is really, really quite bizarre. That's getting confused between individual rights and the obvious. So, if somebody wants to call themselves a woman and you're a man, I don't mind, but don't expect me to join in, you know? And it doesn't matter what medical procedures have had on the rest of it. I might say, you know, "You're a bloke who's had your dick cut off," and so, it doesn't really, it doesn't really matter. I don't understand why it's quite so hysterical. But somebody who has been a man isn't a woman, you know, they have been a man, they might want to call themselves a woman if they might have had operations and all the rest of it, but they're still not a woman. And, you know, it's a consequence of grouping rights together, because of course, turds can't stand it, you know? Was it something exclusive radical feminist, trans-exclusive radical feminist, isn't it? So to see, I mean, it's not really funny, but it's, it's kind of makes me just roll my eyes to see feminists piling into transsexuals and vice versa, and, dear, dear, we're all human beings, you know? With due respect, we don't need to put ourselves into categories like this, but people just love doing it.
Oh, yeah, people love a tag.
Human beings are tribal, but, and that's a powerful instinct, but there are many human instincts that we need to, we need to control, and we do, like convention and general morality. So that's an instinct, that tribal instinct needs to be, well, carefully regulated. So for example, I allow myself to express benign antipathy towards certain groups. Manchester City supporters, you know, it's normal, but I control myself because that's a matter of being a decent human being. And of course, that's a way of supplementing all kinds of, them and us, you know? Them and us are natural, but we just need to be careful how we do it. And all this trans business is a kind of bizarre way of dividing people up, it's, I don't, that people want to do it.
But what's more bizarre is how well it works.
Sure, it does, doesn't it? I think it has profound, is a profound threat to democracy as well, because it's important that the demos, you know, the people and their relationship with the people who govern them that they choose, is close. Because if you start breaking down the demos into sub-elections and elections which people don't care about and all the rest of it, you then open up areas for exploitation, where people get elected and nobody really cares. You know, we've seen it with local councils in this country, sometimes, quite often. It's relatively benign, there have been some really bad outcomes. We see it with the European Union, so for example, when UK was in the European Union, we had something called the Eastern Region MP, nobody cares. So very low turnout, that's really dangerous. You know, people have to care about what they're voting for. And this feeds into what I was saying about people of nowhere, probably they don't care. And it can become the relationship between money and not caring, be a person of nowhere, they can come together, I think it's what frightens so many people, we get the stories of the WF and all the rest of it. Because although it may not be a conspiracy, and I don't think it is, it can still look like one, because that's the effect that's being had, you know, we watch it, we see rich people moving around, people who don't care about being here or being there. Our Prime Minister, a case in point, you know, at the moment, he's being treated like a hired gun. And so, you know, okay, he's a bright lad, you know, he knows his money, it's very handy in a Prime Minister. He can hold an argument, seems reasonable, affable and so on, but does he really care? Doesn't seem too much, you know, he doesn't see, and he doesn't get the culture either. But, well, it might be, and I don't really mind, it doesn't matter that much. You know, he's a hired professional and provided he's doing the job, that's fine. And if the country doesn't like it, then his party will be voted out at the next general election. But he's a classic person of nowhere. He even kept his green card, well, Prime Minister of this country. And of course, naturally, the electorate's going to think, "Well, why are you doing that then?" He's going to do a bug.
Unfortunately though, even if he is voted out, the opposition isn't any better.
No, that is a problem, and when that happens, and it's beholden on all of us to stand for election and to use this well-honed democratic system we've got here, which has developed over hundreds of years, pushing a thousand years, as monarchy slid into Star Chamber and this was proto-parliament, small parliament, and the English Civil War and, you know, democracy development, they graduate over this hundreds of years. And it's very precious, you know, the secret vote is just so precious, and we're so lucky to have it. And to see it getting tinkered around with and it's under threat all the time is really quite disturbing.
Absolutely.
When I was elected as a city councillor in 2012, interesting incident, where because in this country, votes are made on little bits of paper, so you can vote in booth, you've got your candidates, you put your cross next to your candidate, take it out, fold it up, stick it in the box. This is watched all the way by real people, so candidates, tellers, anybody can just watch this. Stand over, if you really want to, you stand over the box. And you just watch it being taken to the counting place, St Andrews Hall in this case, in Norwich. And it's all very transparent indeed, nobody get up to it, because everybody's all over it watching. Anyway, the counting came about in St Andrews Hall, and there was a volunteers' count slips, but there are people watching, like me and other people interested. And this one was counting out slips, and in Norwich at the time, it was a local election, the votes, the vast majority were for either Labour or Green. And so what she was doing was piling up Labour votes, 100, 100 Labour votes, 100 Green votes, 100 Labour votes, stacks of 100 Green votes. And somehow, 100 Green votes got moved over to the 100 Labour votes. And my colleague spotted it, and she said, "Shouldn't those..." And my colleague spotted it and she said, uh, shouldn't those votes be over there? Oh, terribly sorry. And she moved them across, you know, we both thought, was that deliberate? I don't know. Anyway, it's not big scale, so we don't know whether it's an accident or not. But anyway, um, the, the candidate, uh, green candidate won by less than a hundred votes, so if it hadn't been spotted, uh, that would have been a miscarriage, deliberate or otherwise, but on such a tiny scale. And if it's start to be done digitally or done out of people's sight, it's, uh, it's open to manipulation. And we're very lucky to have this system, we need to hold on to it. Now, if we don't like what politicians are doing, vote them out, form your own party. And there's quite a few people around here very interested in, uh, in politics and with some very, very interesting ideas that, uh, that need to be challenged and got out in the open and exchanged and, um, let's get some debate going. Uh, the, you know, the tyranny of conformity is, is terrifying, you know, the way people just acquiesce to fashionable opinions. And we've seen two belting examples in, in this country in the last ten years just. The referendum for Scottish independence and the Brexit vote. Prior to the Scottish referendum, well, you know, the polls were saying, oh, Scots are going to vote for independence. It's by, by a big margin, five, ten points. When it came to it, they didn't, it's the other way around, secret vote, they voted to remain in the Isle of Kedum. Well, how interesting, so why is that then? So why, why do the polls think this? But actually, it's that. We can only speculate. I think it's because Scottish independence was the fashionable vote. I think even in focus groups and even being stopped in the street by people taking surveys, Scots would rather say in front of other people, I'm voting for independence and voting to remain in the UK. You know, if you're Scottish, you'll have an opinion on this, no doubt.
See, I never understood that whole Scottish independence thing with the Brexit, because surely, like with the British, anyway, or sorry, with the English, they voted Brexit to have control.
And the Welsh.
And the Welsh, where the Scot, the Scottish want their independence, but they still want it to be governed by the E U.
Well, Scottish Nationalists, that's not.
Independent, isn't it?
Exactly, well, I don't know what their argument is against that, uh, and the E U isn't going to have them. And the last thing the E U wants is separatist movements, I mean, the next thing, the EU will have Bavaria at it, Catalonia at it, Catalonia's already tried it.
Hmm.
They've, they've gotten, the, the guys who stood for election for independent Catalonia, who won the election, illegal because the Spanish government wouldn't let them do it, so de facto is illegal. They had to leg it, got nicked in Belgium and sent back to Spain to, to do their time. I mean, it's absolutely outrageous and this is happening in the European Union. So, I mean, the Scottish nationalists are kidding themselves if they think the EU will let them back in. Um, as much as a lovely fantasy that might be. The other thing is, you know, the EU's got, looking after enough people as it is. And it's not, uh, the EU, the thing is with the European Union, it's not accountable. I touched earlier on, you need a relationship between, uh, geography and the electorate. Otherwise, you're using other definitions, like we've seen it with, uh, with race in South Africa. Religion to a degree in Northern Ireland. If you start doing that, it's really divisive because you've got tribes living in the same patch of land who are antagonistic. So you have to have the same, you have to have an electorate that cares about the patch of land that's being, um, voted over, that's being, that you're voting representatives to make decisions over. And that's where the European Union has got an advantage, because not enough people care about it. I can't speak for the other European nations, it's difficult to say, but not enough people care about it here. And when we're in the European Union, as was proven by, by Brexit. And so it, it worries me, it reminds me of, uh, the Green Party when, um, in the Green Party in Norwich, this is not all, um, the, the, the Green Parties of England and Wales are very separate. But it's second most powerful and it's second most populous, second most well-elected in the country after Brighton at the time. And they're very separate organisations, but that's tail wagging the dog. There's this thing called the executive, which is elected by the, by the members, who control the members. Uh, of course, it should be the other way around, otherwise it's the Supreme Soviet, you know, the Chinese, Central Committee, the Chinese Communist Party as well. The executive is supposed to be doing the will of the elected body, but it isn't, it's controlling the elected body. And it looks every inch like the European Commission is doing exactly that to the European Parliament. It's, uh, it's paternalistic, it's childish, you know, so, you know, the commission is saying, well, which way are you going to vote then, parliament? You're going to vote for an early bedtime Mordiwanson chocolate. You know, it's, 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 it seems, it seems pretty transparent to me and it's so lumpen. You know, the, the Brexit vote here, returning to the Scottish independence vote, uh, notion, when it seemed that we're going to vote to remain in the European Union and we didn't, I think it's the same story. The fashionable vote was to remain in the European Union. That's absolutely fascinating, the way the European Union has managed to project itself as all fluffy and nice and lovely and we're all together in one happy family. No, we're not. I mean, the, the laws in this country are completely at odds with the laws in the European Union, which are Napoleonic, you know?
Yeah.
Napoleon, of course, conquered Europe and imposed as good as Napoleonic war, uh, Napoleonic legislation over Europe. Another observation, like I say about Protestantism and, um, and climate change, is people just don't seem to, well, draw conclusions from this pretty clear fact, is that every country of the European Union has lived under a dictatorship in living memory. With the exception of the Irish Republic, because they shamefully were neutral in the Second World War. We've got a really dumb sum air bases and naval bases in the west of Ireland, Cork, for example, to extend the cover into the Atlantic at the height of the Atlantic War. Nevertheless, the remaining union, they remained neutral. Have you seen that photograph of Hitler and Mussolini and Aynne de Valera walking together? It's absolute belter, they're walking together towards camera, laughing about something. You know, the Irish Republic has a strong fascist streak about it and, uh, that's again unhealthy. But anyway, so you, so Irish Republic, uh, not, uh, not living under a dictatorship. Um, because of the strategic reasons to do the Second World. Malta, arguably, uh, it's another country that hasn't lived under dictatorship, though many would say Dom Mintoff was a dictator, so became a dictator as he was in power for so long. Uh, that's it, Sweden, uh, was neutral during the Second World War, had a very enthusiastic trading relationship with Nazi Germany. Um, all the rest have lived under dictatorship. So what I'm saying is they're used to it, they don't really care, you know, they're, they're happy to be looked after, like children. And this is, um, this is the downside of, um, Catholic culture. You know, you have literally the padre, father, our father. Um, they don't mind being patronised, looked after and, and all the rest of it. Well, that makes a lot of people unhappy, that's, that's fine, there are a lot of happy Catholics. But it needs, uh, it needs sorting out, it needs to be observed at least, then it can be discussed. And then we can draw conclusions like, do we want to be dominated by, uh, uh, a political body which is not truly accountable? And is born out of, um, the cultures which gave birth to fascism, communism and Nazism. And they did, they're all European creeds, you know, of course, I'm not suggesting that European Union is fascist, Nazi or communist, but it could so easily slide that way. When you have somebody like Von der Leyen, not elected, strutting around the world stage like, like European Union is a separate body. Or is it? Well, it certainly is acquiring power all the time.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, and it's not, uh, it's not probably accountable to, to the people. It's very dangerous. If you're Chinese, you might argue that, well, this is the future of, uh, future of the world, you know, it's governed by management.
God help us.
Yeah, and not governed by the will of the people, uh, the, the electorate. Um, political parties banging up against each other and enacting what people really want. Because they all have consensus. And this one, they're really shocked, you know, people say shocked a lot. But when I was in the Green Party, I was, I was talking to, um, the leader of the Green Group and a, um, Green councillor, who was a city councillor and a county councillor, couldn't believe my ears. We're in our house, just, my house just had a cup of tea or something, and, um, they said they didn't believe in voting. And these are not just anybody, you know, these are elected officials with, you know, within the terms of Norwich Green Party, a lot of power. So, well, surely you do, and they said, no, we believe in consensus. And I thought, well, yeah, well, yeah, so did Adolf Hitler, you know, so did Pol Pot, so did Stalin. Of course, they've got, they've got consensus, you try opposing it, you know, you can't. They would just assume that they are, they just assume they are right. And that's another problem we have with people chucking powder paint over pool tables and all the rest of it. They think that everybody is like them, that they're kind of benign protesters. And the whole will be nice and fluffy and be populated by guardian readers who are reasonable and can formulate an argument and all the rest of it. But it's not, sadly, it's not, so people need to be persuaded. You can't just know you're right. And some of the people do that, they just know they're right, so they don't, there seems to be a cultural habit of, um, because they know they're right to defend a position, it's somehow aggressive and rude. Now, the number of times I see people making declarations and counter declarations, they'll say something. And if you say, are you sure that's right? It's like you've been offensive.
Yeah.
Well, well, what about this?
Don't knock the apple cart.
Yeah, oh god, how could you, you vulgar person. It's, uh, it's very unhealthy and, uh, it's good to see, uh, getting some diversity in the media here, broadcast media with, uh, G B News and Talk Radio, I think, isn't it?
Yeah, Talk TV.
Yeah, but, uh, because we, we do have the BBC as well and we have Sky. Uh, you know, and mainstream news as they get called. And I, I used to work for the BBC and, you know, I know, I know what they're like. It's curious culture, it's somewhere between, um, it's, well, it's both royalist and socialist, it's quite, quite strange. It appears to be still the case, I'm talking about the eighties now. But that's, uh, that's a funny old place, you know, they will, it's a bit like, I was saying to you earlier about conjuring tricks. It's as though, they're, they're not lying, um, they're not trying to put a spin on anything. They think they're being neutral and they're telling the truth and investigating. But the problem is, the, the question is agenda all the time, yeah, yeah, what are you investigating? And why are you investigating that? Why are you talking about this? I mentioned a Panorama programme earlier, it was treated by, it was presented there called Justin Rolla. He's, he's, he's good at it, he's a proper professional. He's not in control of this, but he's, but his face is on the show. But there, there are times during that when I was expecting Benny Hill music, it's being treated as a joke. This is not funny, it's really serious.
Hmm.
And it's not problematic working class people being a nuisance against nice Oxford University students on their bicycles. As though it has to be one or the other, you either save the planet or restrict people's movement, which is the way it's being presented. And of course, you can present it that way, um, and call it neutral. So, so we do, you know, we hear from people protesting about having the movement restricted and we have people say, we've got to save the planet. And there it just sits there. And a disingenuous argument, which, which is frustrating, fairly standard, they had a, um, an academic on there, there's, um, Professor Aldred, Aldrich, I think his name was, from Westminster University, uh, talking about, well, do we use up more fuel driving around Oxford trying to get to somewhere? Or do we go, like, go straight through? And what have been the benefits and disbenefits over the years? And she was saying, well, it was fairly neutral, a bit unclear according to her research. And then we had an example in Hackney of a road which had been closed off in the nineteen seventies. But it closed off with trees and they're step, like, how big is this tree, this road has been blocked off for several decades? That's a different matter, that's, that's an entirely different matter. If a local council wants to close off the end of a road by neutral, like, because they've been elected to make these decisions, that's fine, it's not discriminatory. The problem with the, with what's happening now is discriminatory. They say, you can't go there, in effect, because you are that category of person. And it's getting worse and worse and worse. And, uh, that example I was giving earlier about the apocryphal East Coast town, which might well not be South Wales, obviously. Uh, but it could, could.
Could be, though.
It could be, it could get quite, uh, uh, it's quite tense and, you know, horrible and, uh, it's maybe evil. You know, we had, um, Robert Cat's rebellion around here in Norwich. International audience may not know, but, yeah, it's writers, thousands, a thousand, ten thousand, twelve thousand people. A, a mixture of sort of lower middle class narcs and, um, peasantry, uh, storming Norwich and had to be put down eventually by, um, by, uh, by the cavalry, the, the king's troops and Hessian mercenaries, but they, they've eventually got their way. But there is, uh, quite a feeling of, uh, of that about what's, what's going on at the moment. Um, I doubt would it be storming Norwich with pitchforks, pitchforks and all the rest of it. But the, uh, the equivalent in, in modern terms, I think the Brexit vote was an example of, is just that. You know, they gave the peasantry a chance and whoops, that went horribly wrong. And, uh, it exposed the arrogance of David Cameron. And I know he's under pressure from the, um, from that swell of anti-European Union feeling in this country. And the pressure from the media was enormous, you know, to, uh, against leaving the European Union, but still the, uh, the electorate, um, still voted for it despite everything. I still got my booklet, this, this again, it's, it's another fact, it's just not, it's just de-emphasised for, for people who, who were living in Britain at the time. We're all, every household in the country has sent a little booklet, about that big, I've still got mine, on why we should vote to leave the European, remain in the European Union. Not why we should vote to leave, why we should vote to remain, but with nothing neutral about it at all, absolutely brazen. These are reasons why you should vote to remain in the European Union. And, uh, well, the peasantry wasn't having it. So, you know, uh, so they voted the other way to the, to the shock of the establishment. And it's still being unwound now and there's still pressure, still pressure. And we get constant economic arguments, well, it's, it's going to take time, it's always going to take time. And people confusing, media deliberately confusing the consequences of Brexit and the consequences of the European Union's response to Brexit, which of course is entirely different. So we now have restrictions on driving into Europe, being in Europe for over three months. Well, that's, the European Union doesn't have to do that, but it's chosen to do it. It's not because we voted Brexit, yeah, we, it's, yeah, that's right. I mean, the Spanish and the Portuguese at least can't stand it, all they're doing is losing tourist money. Whereas the reasons why people voted for Brexit are a myriad. Um, mine are constitutional, for kind of reasons we've been, we've been talking about here, the lack of representation and the lack of, um, proximity between the voter and people exercising their powers bestowed on them by the voter. And there's a huge distance in Europe, plus the lack of compatibility between British culture and European culture. Um, but there, there are many other arguments, um, I can see why. Um, you take, for example, a rural working class person, working, let's say, uh, picking vegetables, um, on a farm in Lincolnshire. Say ten pounds an hour minimum wage, whatever it is, something like that, uh, by law, um, fine. Well, that person doing all that hard work at ten pounds an hour, in this country, what can they afford? A room to live in, maybe? Or studio flat, maybe, maybe a room. Whereas prior to Brexit, if you were, say, Romanian, you could come here. Freedom of movement, ten pounds an hour, same minimum wage, no problems at all, easy peasy, good for the farmer, plenty, plenty of willing labour. But the motivation there for the Romanian, um, vegetable picker or whatever it might be, is that ten pounds an hour is massively more for him when he takes it home. So he can save up thousands of pounds over the summer, two or three seasons of that, take it home, can really do some stuff, can buy a plot of land, build a house, look after his family, the British worker can't do that. And a lot of the British rural working class know that very well. And, uh, they weren't happy with the competition. And to dress it all up as racist, I deeply resent that, that's, that's a horrible trope. No, it isn't, it's, uh, it's objection to the lack of fairness of the whole way it's panning out. And that seems, um, I, I can understand why they did it and, uh, and we got the result. But the shock amongst this, among the establishments, well, a surprise, you know, the, the efforts to have another vote and all the rest, shocking. I think it really is.
Well, they just wanted another vote until they got what they wanted.
Yeah, it wasn't the right answer.
No, well, I will drink to that.
What are we drinking to exactly?
Well, this podcast and.
Yeah, okay, excellent, go with that, drink to this podcast.
Cheers, everybody.
Cheers, everyone.
Thank you for joining us.
Any, any opinions of what we've, uh, been talking about, it'd be great to hear them in the comments section below. We always, well, I always, as you know, answer them as best I can and it's been absolutely fascinating. I've just been sat here like a sponge, absorbing. Well, thank you very much, I hope I haven't sort of bumbled around too much, but I didn't want to deliver a lecture, you know, I wanted to be.
No, 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 no.
What conversation, just let it, let it flow around a bit.
No, it was absolutely good.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
David George is everybody, thank you.
Thank you.